All right, so we're starting caucus now tonight because we're having a big changeover with the new totes and dual stream. I've asked some folks to come in and present to us about the change, let us know things. Particularly as we get questions from constituents, we'll be able to answer them. I know in my ward, the main questions that I've gotten have not been about the totes themselves, but about clarifying what can go in them. I don't know what other information other folks have got, but I think it's really important too for us to understand why we're going to dual stream. So when folks have other questions and important things, especially like how the city is saving money by going to dual stream rather than continuing with the single stream. So, we've got Julie and Ed, and I'll turn the show over to you for a little while here.
Sure. Do you want us to stay here or are we going to sit here?
It's up to you. Whatever you think is most effective.
This is most effective.
You could just...
Okay, so as you hopefully have all heard and seen, we transitioned to dual stream recycling today. Today was our first day. Just to give you some background, seven years ago, we switched to single stream. And at that time, we provided everyone with one single tote, put all your commingled bottles, cans, plastic, cardboard, and paper into one tote. And since then, the markets have changed and also the place where we bring our recyclables has changed their policies. And so, since we send all of our recyclables to Ulster County Research Recovery Agency, they mandated that we switch to dual stream. The mayor's been negotiating this over the last year. I know that the Freeman's been covering this since April of last year, this process. And so, after negotiating two extensions, finally, we settled on the fact that it would be April 1st today that that transition happened. So in anticipation of that, a couple of things have happened within the city. One is that we applied for funding to help to support this process. So, funding for, to hire or to fund a recycling coordinator for one year, that position has been filled by me for the year, so I'm serving as a recycling coordinator. So 50% of my time and all the materials that we put together are being reimbursed. And we also have funding to reimburse 50% of all the totes that we have purchased, and all the lids and all the components. So, the tote vendor that we've used for the last, throughout whenever we've had totes, has been Cascade. We put this out to bid a couple of months ago, and Cascade was the successful bidder. And so, several months ago, we ordered 7,000 totes. And in order to do so, we ordered new, we have the large full-size ones out there, but just this is a mini Matthew Noble version. So, the new totes that you'll see around town are the same exact color, blue with a yellow lid. And this is what everyone is putting their cardboard and their paper into. And your existing tote, which currently has a black lid on it...
It's blue.
I know, right? Don't tell them that I've got these. And the new tote will have a blue lid, and I'll get to that in a second. So, starting last week, on the 25th, we, at our transfer station, started accepting tractor-trailer loads of these totes. And they came in a couple trailers a day, so we're constantly getting more and more and more. Offloaded those, Cascade, the company, offloaded those onto a rental box truck. And since 11:00 AM last Monday, has been dropping them off in less than a minute at each house. So literally, there's three gentlemen that are riding in the truck. One is the driver. One person is constructing the totes while the truck drives. So they're inserting the wheels and the axle and the bottom of the tote while the truck is driving. And then there's another gentleman on the ground who's lifting them off, rolling them up to the house, scanning them with a scanner, and allocating, associating the number, which are not on my little demos, but there's an RFID chip, a little code on the side of it. And so, they are basically saying, "Okay, 101 Wilson Avenue now has theirs," and this is their code. At the end of every day, I get a list. We're distributing about 900 a day. They told us that it would take six to 10 days for full distribution. At this time, they are fully on track, and there are fewer than 900 to distribute at this time. What we found out in the process is that due to some difficulties in record-keeping over the past several years, it's been challenging and an opportunity for us to really hone in on the list of where we have totes, where we have the garbage totes, where we have the blue totes. So we've been really working at that, and Cascade has been fantastic in helping us fix up our numbers. Luckily, we ordered more than we needed to, so we have plenty. But originally, the number of homes that we thought in our database had totes is actually much more than what we're current, much less. So we're finding that more and more every day. And so what's happened is, in order to help roll this out, we've tried, we've gone through as much education as we can up till now, we're going to continue throughout the whole year. So we've done two PSAs on the radio, we've established a website, we've established an email. We, of course, have been in communication with the Freeman. The Freeman's been doing great coverage of what's going on. It's been in the paper many, many times. Hopefully, everyone got a Swift 911 alert about it, you got a text about it. We've been on two radio shows already, and we mailed home flyers to every door and every property owner. So through the U.S. Postal Service, we sent home a folded-in-half letter, bilingual, so it was English and Spanish, and then also a new calendar, which was established as part of this program, English and Spanish. And that went home also with the fridge flyer. So this is the calendar, and this is the fridge flyer. These went to 1,636 people. And the, we've gotten great feedback about it. We've been told this is very clear. I will say, we're probably going to do a supplemental send home because on the bottom, there's just some really key things that are constantly contamination. And I will say that this, these contaminants are no different now with dual stream than they were with single stream, than they were with dual stream when we were originally dual stream. And so, I brought in, as a demo, our major contaminants, and it doesn't take long to realize this, I sat in dispatch today, DPW, and listened for 300-plus calls that came in from the packer drivers saying, you know, "We've got another one with plastic bags, we've got another one with this, we've got another one with this." So our top three contaminants, clamshells. And not just this type of clamshell, we're talking dairy containers, salad containers, these deli containers, even though they have trampolines on the bottom of them, these are contamination. And we were out at upper today, and we were witnessing all of the other haulers and what they have brought in, Royal Carding and all the different private haulers. We're not the only ones that have contamination with clamshells, but they are not recyclable. And it's interesting because this county has switched from styrofoam over to eliminating styrofoam, and a lot of takeout businesses use these types of clamshells, but it's not actually recyclable in our area. So that's contaminated. We also find an incredible amount of plastic bags. And it's oftentimes what's happening is people will take their plastic from inside their home, they'll take their recyclables, you know, they'll collect them at home, and then they'll take this outside and put this into their tote with the value stock. And so we're finding the bags, and those are contamination. So we find those all the time, that's a major contaminant. And another one is pizza boxes. So pizza boxes, although they are made of paperboard, they are not recyclable. They are garbage. Whether or not it's as clean as it possibly could be or not, it's got wax coating on it or plastic coating on the inside, and those are trash as well. So with this, it's been a really big push for education as much as possible. And the education on here is as streamlined as possible, but it's no different than what we were doing with single stream. It's just putting it in writing. And so unfortunately, what we realize is that when we look on the bottom here and it says whatnot to recycle, the reality is many of these things can be recycled, they just can't be recycled in our curbside pickup. So things like plastic bags can go back to the store where you bought them, light bulbs can go back to the store, batteries, you know, many different things on the bottom of this here, and many other things, textiles and other things can be recycled. So we're putting together just an FAQ that we'll put on the website. We may send home like a, "No, don't put these in there," so that we can make sure that they are, we're having compliance. And that is, you know, go ahead.
So when you say contamination, what are the consequences if we have a load that goes to the station and it's got contaminants in it? What happens?
Yep, so I'll get to that. So today, we rolled out for the first time. As we delivered, as Cascade delivered the totes, they did it based on the day of people's normal collections. We had them start with Monday so that, you know, everyone would have it on the same day, Tuesday, Wednesday. We also arranged in the calendar, that this week for sure would be a blue week, would be the week that you put out just your bottles, your cans, and your metal, because we knew that not everyone would have their yellow totes by today. So intentionally, we started with blue. We, you know, you go into this and you hope that everyone got the message, everyone understands what's going on, you all got it, and then we hope to open up these blue totes and see only the commingled. That wasn't the case. And so, what we decided as a policy with DPW for this month is that although this happens pretty commonly, but we wanted to ensure that it happened this month, in particular this week, is that every DPW representative that was out collecting trash was looking directly at every single tote, looking and making sure that only the things that were supposed to be in here, only bottles and cans and plastic, metal and glass, were in their tote. If that were the case, they were dumping that into the packer and then moving on to the next one. If that was not the case, so if somebody put their paper in here, and that was obvious when they opened it, they were leaving the tote there. And then what was happening is the packer driver was calling into dispatch, and I was there writing it all down with George, and they were calling them in. And they would say, "101 Wilson Avenue put plastic bag in their tote, 101 Wilson Avenue, commingled." You know, 102 Wilson Avenue, commingled. And so, commingled being, people didn't get the message and they put it all in, or they got the message and they had already put all of their things into one and didn't want to take them out. And we saw a lot of that today. We saw a lot of, people had already put all their things as though it was still collecting single stream and put it out, thinking we were going to continue to collect a single stream, or not having the ability to get it and take it out, whatever, whatever's the case. So even though the letter indicates that we were going to leave it there, in order to maintain our schedule of being able to start in this month with picking up just the two different totes with their correct contents, we compiled a list of all of those contaminated loads, which was 335 today, and brought in a second team and sent around a second packer to pick up the contaminated loads. They not only picked it up, but they also had a sheet of paper that said, "Please only put bottles, cans, and glass in this tote," and they take that to the tote for those 300 people. Subsequent to that, we, Ed and myself and Ryan Kuhn, the deputy superintendent, and the labor foreman, Mike McCrery, all went out and met with Ulster County Research Recovery Agency. We followed the packers out today. So we had three packers that were of the non-contaminated, what you were supposed to put out today, loads, and we had one which had about 30 of the houses out of the 300, which was the contaminated load. So we had made arrangements with Ulster County Research Recovery Agency not to dump onto the typical tipping floor where they would do this, but to separate out our load and for all of us to witness how we did the first day, and they're going to be doing this over the course of the week, to understand where we need to focus more attention, which day do we need to work on a little bit more, how are things going. So the first three loads were dumped, and the compliance was super high, basically on A+. And that was, of course, a function of our guys looking in the totes and making sure they were only picking up the ones that were in compliance. But they can't see everything, they can only see what's on the top, so generally, we had good compliance. Now, by good compliance, that also means though, that there were clamshells, and there were plastic bags, and there were some other contaminants. However, they basically said, "Good job, you guys did well, this is cleaner than we expected." Then we sent in, so they pushed that all into the area where all of our dual stream recycling would get sorted with everyone else's. And then we dropped our load that had contaminants in it, and it was full of food and flower pots and junk.
Everything you don't want.
Everything you don't want. We had long discussions about what this all would look like, and ultimately, they were very happy with the process. They didn't charge us for any of the loads, which is the case with dual stream, it's for free, which is an incredible reason why we're doing this. And we moved on. And so the strategy is to continue this process for the next week with the commingled. Next week starts paper and cardboard, and we will do the same thing again. We're having leniency this month and not violating, not sending violations, because we know this is an incredible time of transition. If you happen to already put your stuff in your tote and you don't want to pick it out, I don't blame you. I mean, you're leaning down into a big thing, or you're dumping it down, or whatever it is. But we do certainly understand that Ulster County Research Recovery Agency is not going to just give us a pass forever. So we're, they're working very closely with us, we've got a great relationship with them. They're, we're doing education together, we're working on compliance together, we're working with them on like, how can we accept more products? And as a whole, it's gone really well. We have people communicating with us directly through their email and through dispatch when they haven't gotten their tote for whatever reason, and we follow that and go back to them on the same, get them one on the same day. There are a very small amount of people that have requested a smaller one with a minimal amount of those, and we're making note of that based on if someone has a handicap or needs special accommodations. And what will happen next, after these two, after this week, when everyone will have their tote by Wednesday, we've been told Friday by the latest, we will be getting our delivery of lids, which will be the blue lid with the new label hot-stamped into it. And that's going to be taken off, the DPW will drive around, they're going to physically take off the black lids that you have, we're going to store those because that is a universal lid that will fit with the brown totes that we have, we need extra lids. We're also able to recycle those, so we're working with Cascade, we can reclaim and get credit for any broken tote, any broken lid, they'll take those back. And they will replace these now with the new blue lid, and we'll be good to go. Tom?
With the soup cans and everything like that, right, goes in, should we clean them out?
Everything has to be cleaned out.
So it has to be...
Don't have to take the label off, but it has to be clean.
Okay.
And so, in addition to contamination from products that aren't supposed to be in there, contamination from food or soil materials, dirty, you know, basically dirty recyclables, that leads to contamination as well. And to get to your point of what happens when we have contaminated loads, like I said, we basically got a waiver this time, but in general, when we have a contaminated load, which could be anything from finding a pizza box to bags, like peanut butter all over the place, or sauce, or whatever, then they divert that to the waste stream, and we have to then pay that fee as opposed to the free recycling.
So in one pizza box?
It's, they have people that are looking at them, I mean, one box may not do it, but it's a trigger, it's a red flag, so they figure if there's one in there, there's more, and they could just contaminate the whole load at that point, which could be three or four tons of material, and be charging us $105 a ton. So that's what we're trying to avoid by doing this, keeping this...
Another question I have, milk cartons, orange juice cartons, garbage?
So that's a really important thing to remember, is that if the loads are contaminated, if people aren't cleaning their stuff and doing the correct distribution, that's going to cost the city money, that's going to redound the people's taxes. So one of the ways to keep our taxes lower is to make sure when folks put stuff in recycling, if they're following the rules, cleaning the stuff. And I think, and that's another question that people have had, is why not continue with single stream with a private vendor? And the problem there would have been a really high cost, right?
It was going up to $140 a ton to do that. And that was only limited time, too.
Okay, and so, and we produce about how many tons of recycling a year?
Recycling was 1,700 and change, almost 1,800 tons.
All right, so 1,800 times $140, that's what we're looking at, and then only for a limited time? All right, so that's why we switched to dual stream. We're saving the city money by doing these things. We're saving taxpayers' money by doing these things while continuing to recycle. I mean, that's the crucial thing. We're making that commitment to recycling. Other questions?
So this is, you're going to do this 50% of your time?
Mm-hmm, I'm currently doing it more than 50%.
100% of your time. Now, how about, is there someone hired in your spot that you're doing? Jack wants to go to campus.
I will be co-directing the summer camp this summer.
Co-direct?
Two days a week instead of five.
Instead of five?
Is that determined that he's not going to come?
No, I'm just...
Yes, I have a great support system. I have an environmental educator, environmental specialists that are picking up on some of my duties while this is happening, but this, I'm also managing the LED lighting retrofit this year, and they're just big projects. But as we've seen, I mean, I'm not sure that Ed would have been able to have any one of his top, one of his staff working, I mean, I'm just doing like legwork that needs to be done all the time. And it will be, it's a big push right now, so it's like 100% of my time right now, but by the time we get to the closer to the end of the year, it won't be that big a case.
You said the blue lids are being delivered after Wednesday?
After April 12th.
Oh, okay.
Keep in mind that right now, we have a hired team of three through Cascade that is professionally delivering building as they go. It will, people need to be patient, certainly. It's also sort of a different situation in that right now, they're delivering totes, there's no caveat, like there doesn't have to be a tote there for you to take a lid off of. So starting on the 12th, it will certainly be focusing on the day where your tote's already out, and then switching them out, but it takes, you know, a tool to lift it off, put it back on. So, you know, generally, a lot of the folks in DPW are going to kind of just keep lids in the back of their trunk and, you know, change them out as it goes. It's going to take a while to change them.
I was just wondering if we're going to notify people to make sure they put them out on the day when they're supposed to be changed?
We're not currently thinking of doing that, they're just going to put them out on their normal day.
We're going to swap them out on their normal day, see what we can get done. It's going to take several teams of guys just doing that all day long.
Other questions? I already noticed in the third ward that people have integrated them into their, you know, their rotation. Just even coming over here, I saw a lot of people had their correct tote out, I don't know what they had inside them, but people, they've been delivered. I've only seen one that hasn't been pulled back behind the house yet. So it seems like people are really getting where. I think you all have done a great job, given the limited time that you have of letting people know, really working at this to try to give people a real heads up, you know, in that short period of time. So so far, seems to be working well, appreciate all the work that you are doing to make this happen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And we do have, we just set up a couple of things outside, if you wanted to see, you know, what things go in which tote. But thank you for giving us the time to just talk to you about it. If you feel like you need more of the fridge flyers, or more of the calendars for your constituents, in theory, everyone should have gotten one, but we've had a couple of people that have said that they haven't, or if you just need more, just let us know. There's some at DPW, and there's some in my office, too.
Thank you, guys.
Because next time, pizza in the box.
Pizza in the box, got it.
Thanks so much. All right, on to the usual business for caucus. So we have a number of resolutions, 19,000 to look at tonight, and we'll get started. Resolution number 57, regarding issuing a mega declaration in connection with the Kingston Waterfront Empire State Trail Improvement Project and the secret process pursuant to 6 NYCLR, Part 617. This is from laws and rules. Can you review this for us quickly?
Yeah, so the city did a short environmental assessment form, determined that it's a unlisted act under the secret, so there's no agency, so they're just asking for a mega, for this.
Is everybody okay with this one? Any questions, concerns? All right. Resolution 58, regarding approving the settlement between CSCA and the city at Kingston. Any questions? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
This is in litigation, and we're just authorizing a settlement between CSCA and the city to provide Medicare insurance to former laboratory employees. Without being specific, we've authorized basically Kevin to negotiate a settlement.
All right, any questions about it?
Number 59, is transfer of funds in Parks and Mercury, carryover of unspent monies from the Hudson River Estuary Program. Zero impact to the city.
We got to get that one. Any questions? All right, resolution 60.
This is the budget transfer to cover New York State retirement system costs, including amounts used to pay off 2012 and 2014, as we previously approved. So it's coming from the fund balance to various accounts, but this is something that we already approved.
Again, this is another thing that's going to save us money longer by paying ourselves...
Yeah, $375,000 is coming from the fund balance to do this.
All right, questions, concerns on that one? 61.
Is the participatory budget, this is to use the parking revenues to distribute for various projects, one uptown, which I think is $15,000, and the other one was, one with Midtown and uptown, or Midtown and downtown, but there are two projects, one is 15, one is $30,000, I can't remember which.
Downtown, 15,000.
Yeah, okay.
There's no description of these projects, so does anybody need to hear more about them?
I don't have that, but we certainly discussed that in committee and can get you more information.
Well, community development, which I chair, is $15,000 for downtown, and the downtown Business Association wanted to have that money, help me out.
Use program.
Use program.
So we're developing a, an application for people to submit ideas that that money can go to, and we can do it however. You see that if we have five different projects or one different project, it's about $15,000. So I think that will be next month, right, where we start the process? May 1st, yeah.
So it's going to be similar to the CDG program, block grant program, where people will file an application and request for money. And we have some community that will be taking over that, for the...
In all, you, you's related.
You's related.
All right, everybody good with that, then?
Head one is number 62, Reg. 62, transfer of $700, zero impact for accounting for the Heritage Area Commission.
Good with that? All right.
63, CDG, yeah, CDG funds, and that we took a look at and distributed to various programs in the city. And I'm not sure if one changes here, the recommendation from the mayor was one small change from one program to another, but it's there, 3,000, that for most part, and I'd like to commend my colleagues here who sit on this board with me, CDG grant, it's very, well rewarding, but not easy to decide who's going to get, how much money, and where, but, you know, we had great conversations, and I believe, you know, everybody was in agreement at the end, so.
Great, and so can you do, tomorrow night, I'm going to talk, I can do a little explaining to folks in the audience about CDG grants and what this is, and appreciate you're giving credit for all of that as well.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to note that, you know, if you were looking at the committee report, you know, there's three of us that voted yes, and two of us that voted no, and just wanted to kind of explain that a little bit, because overall, we were in agreement with almost everything except, you know, one last, the mayor's recommendation at the end, because we ended up voting to, do, but everything else was from the advisory board that we all agreed on. So just, you know, once you're looking at it, so just wanted you to kind of understand for the two people voting, know what's coming from. The one of people would get five from the board, and the three want to go with the mayor's recommendation, so. But overall, you know, I think we're all pleased with the work.
And again, it was a small amount of $3,000. Not, I wouldn't say a small amount, to say, I bet, in regard to amount of $3,000 was discussed.
Well, that's a really important job, and appreciate the difficulty that it's involved because people are committing aspirant money, and everybody has constantly asked for money to ensure their project is the most important one. And so I know that that's, there's a lot of discussion involved, appreciate the work you all did. All right, number 64, finance.
Transfer to cover tax bill for Barmham Park, rebound of $4,000.
Transfer to cover tax bill for Borneo Park, the amount of $4,452.49. Zero impact to the city. It's coming from seasonal and four ways and going into the payroll, playgrounds, general tax.
And your name is on it?
Yeah, I didn't sign this.
Coast name in committee.
My name's on it, but I didn't sign it. I see that. Somehow this, how did that happen?
Well, so how are you going to vote tomorrow night?
Yeah, I will vote tomorrow night.
All right, so everybody good?
I guess I can't sign this now. A little late now.
You'll have to explain tomorrow.
With all the paperwork going around the table. I'm only the chairman. I know.
And resolution 65 is also finance.
Okay. This is the purchase of the Planet Wings property, 500 Broadway, $450,000. And the next one is another $25,000 to cover demolition and removal of debris.
So I had some constituents ask me about this because it is taking the property off the tax rolls. But the issue there is that it's taking it out of the non-homestead chunk, so it won't really affect the rate of homeowners. The amount, though, that it will affect business owners is about $3 per $100,000 of value. So it's a very small amount of money in the end that we're taking in order to create a safe intersection. Because remember, we've had 44 crashes at that intersection in the last five years. It's a small price to pay for safety because this is a place that's got proven dangerous intersection. All right? Any questions?
So I think I saw an email today with regard to this. Not one of my constituents, but someone saying that they made an offer. Honest, am I the only one that saw the email?
So isn't that what you said?
No, he didn't actually make an offer. He was just saying he's proposing.
So that's not being entertained at all?
I, I thought personally in favor of.
I know who it was, but there was no.
It was a constituent of mine who he asked to, yeah, I was remaining anonymous.
Stay how much?
Same.
The same amount?
No, he was saying we would transfer the amount we were going to spend to him.
Oh, right.
He wants a grant, basically. And then he'll work with the city to produce some kind of structure. But the point, you know, this got lost for some people for some reason. The point is to make a safe intersection there. It's a dangerous intersection. And so that's what we're looking at doing. The green space is secondary.
Right. Well, and also, I mean, the way he was saying that we're going to give a grant, that's the part that bothered me is we can't just, you know, other people are going to come and ask for this grant.
Don't forget, I know, I wanted to know if anyone else saw it.
Plus, the property was listed for sale for a while if he was.
It's been over two years since it was for sale. It went up February 2017, I believe.
I would say, I don't, I don't know that I would necessarily agree that the green space is secondary. We've spent a lot of effort over the past decade, you know, trying to make the quarter look nicer. By doing this, by kind of controlling our destiny there, because if we don't buy it, we don't know who's going to buy it. And it could be something, without naming any kind of names of any businesses, it could be something that, you know, could look worse than Jack in the Box or anything that was there before. So at least this way, we have control of what's going to be there.
I agree with that. Some people, for some reason, have got a, the only reason we're doing this is to put in green space.
Yeah, no.
So I just want to make it clear that there was, you know, an initial, okay? So any other points relating to that? Any other concerns?
I can just, myself looking at it, I just think that type of business with like a parking area and traffic going in and out hits the problem there. So possibly it was a business with walk-in traffic instead of people driving and parking in it would be a lot easier to digest, you know? I mean, trucks delivery, all that good stuff. And a bad intersection, it's a boot.
All right. So resolution 68. Laws and rules. Rezone 537.
We had a public hearing on this a couple of months ago. We're just moving this forward to rezoning it to Mall Avenue, rezoning it so it can keep going as it's been going.
But I think you got something back from the county planning that made us delay to receive that and then. No, if we had additional votes.
Well, they were recommending that we rezoned more of them, what we're zoning here, but we decided that, you know, we have the zoning task force looking at everything.
But they didn't deny your.
No, it was just, no, it was just, they were advising.
Six votes instead of five.
No, it was just advisory, it was advisory comments.
No, I, I.
Do you have a question for Bernie?
No, I want to make a comment on this. This goes back to prior to when we had comprehensive zoning. The reason why it had to go to the county was the property borders, the railroad, and that's state law. Now, the county had no objection to it being rezoned, but typical county, they know it's best for a bunch of other changes. But because this was governed by the 1927 ordinance, and this organization was born in the late 1930s, it was legal not conforming for 50 years or more. And at one time, it did have access to Broadway and a street that was known as Freight House Road, because there were four tracks that went across Broadway, and the tracks south, we call it, but southeast was the freight tracks. And there was a freight yard back there. They also had a nice neighbor like a stockyard where they contained pigs and horses to be slaughtered down on the Wheel Street. So they've been around since the late 1930s. They're going to now have access to Susan Street, which is, used to stop at summer, but has been unofficially extended to the back of those properties on Broadway. Eventually, that's going to have to be developed and so forth. So if this is a, there has been an asset to the neighborhood, they're working there, and I put support in, darling.
Yes, great. Okay. I thought at first you were going to suggest we reopen Freight Boulevard there.
No.
No, all right, all right. You're good with it. So everybody good with this one?
I'm good, but you know, that recommendation really isn't that far along because the neighboring parcels of the YMCA, River Radiology, et cetera, are still zoned M1, and they really should be commercial.
Right. And that's, but that's why we said we want to go ahead and get this through. And because we're going to be rezoning, we'll take all that into account in the rezoning process. So we're holding on to that. And can you speak to the importance of what Bernie was saying of this particular facility and how they've been there? Give us a good round sense of that tomorrow night? Great, thank you. All right. 69, public safety. Handicap parking?
How many regrets are there of these? I'll just briefly, the first six are pretty straightforward, either adding a handicap zone, which we had all the information in place, they're entitled to it. Couple of them are removing handicap zone and signs, which is a good thing, frees up more parking. The two that I, I'll take a moment to mention is number 75. Couple of people spoke at council last month about the parking situation on Aura Place and Down Street. So we took some measures to alleviate some of that. We've been parking one side only on Aura Place, a couple other sites to avoid the congestion right at the intersection there. People were here from the area, they seemed satisfied with the solution. And last, number 76, we have a request from the family of Julius Harris, longtime Kingston police officer, not to rename this, I really want to make this, you know, I want to stress this, they're not asking to rename a street. They would like a little sign placed on top of Furnace Street saying, "Juni Harris Way." Juni has been very influential to a lot of folks in the city, including myself. I spent a lot of years working in conjunction with Juni, with KPD, my job with the county. Juni did a lot for this community. I think, you know, he deserves, he deserves that little bit of a mention there. Meets all the criteria of naming something. That's about it.
Are you, any questions about that?
I just wanted to make a comment. Juni Harris was a model police officer. He was appointed a special officer back in the 50s, I would say, maybe late 40s. Worked his way up to the DA's office, okay? Would some of our offices today imitate his behavior in policing? That's all I want to say.
Want to go tomorrow night and say that? Probably speaking?
Oh, I spoke to his grandson the other night.
Yeah, that was inspiring, experiencing him speak. I hope he'll speak tomorrow night.
I guess, now, Steve, this would be similar to the, what is it, Pine Street? Yeah.
Yes, it's just a little.
Because otherwise, it triggers going into.
Oh, mail-in arrest, yeah.
No, it's just commemorative.
Yeah, without renaming the street, it's just a mention.
Because I really know why, notice why it's called Furnace Street, right?
No, not really, there's education on that. Yeah, please.
I do now.
Probably Furnace there.
Actually, somebody told me there was a foundry.
It was a foundry, Furnace.
Somebody told me that.
Oldland's Furnace, that Valerian.
There we go.
A cast and metal casting place? That, yes. And some stowards.
I remember him every day at high school, you say. He was an officer on duty in the morning. He greeted all the students, such a lovely, lovely, lovely man, really, truly, a wonderful, wonderful guy. And his policing of the young people was excellent. You know, nobody got arrested.
Well, they, you know, he treated people with respect.
He did.
Even the people that he arrested, he treated.
Right, right. I don't remember anybody getting arrested. I remember people we talked to, but nobody got arrested. He was good.
Unfortunately, he was the subject of some vandalism in recent years to his car, which was parked in front of his house. It's just happening.
Well, he was shot, his truck, he was shooting up on Prairie Street. And Juni's window was shattered by a bullet. And he just wasn't got it fixed, and made no big deal about it. I think other people may know a big deal about it than he did because he was that type of person.
Well, great. So I hope everybody has memories of him and feel free to stand up tomorrow night and offer those memories. Really important because whenever we have somebody who's a model person for the community who want to keep their spirit alive so people can learn from that and learn from it. All right, anything else then relating to tomorrow night? All right, in that case, if everybody tomorrow night.
They have one thing. It's just, you know, looking at my emails and everything, it just seems that, you know, we have the rules of order, we're dictating pretty much that Friday is the final day for filing any kind of communications, you know? And it just, and I always try to let the handicap signage go because, you know, when people get out of the hospital and, you know, waiting a whole month, they're not going to have that. So just if you can remember, I know things are in blocks a lot of times, but try and get your thought process so you take care of it beforehand. It just makes it easier and better for the chairs, the city clerk's office, and myself and everybody, so forth. So when you send it.
Friday, what do you mean, Friday? Friday before?
Friday before the.
Oh, Friday before the conference. It's the last day to get things, though?
Yeah.
For the next month.
For that month, for committee meetings.
Okay.
Friday, your responsibility.
Right, but again, you know, there's.
Friday before.
Even a handicap, try to get it a couple days before the meeting, just so we can take care of it.